What's up everybody, we're with Roger doing a private coaching session, we're gonna do button and big blind training. I like fully, yeah?
Full?
I want you to push the buttons. Are we low jack? I said big blind, hang on. Okay. Button, big blind. That's all we should be getting.
Yeah, practicing that, but still not, still bad.
Okay. You should be able to click now. What do you wanna do with this one?
Uh, full.
Yeah, why do you fold here?
Oh, shit, I should call.
How often do you bet that here?
Uh, not enough, because three bet more versus this player.
Okay.
This, then versus low jack under the card.
Yeah, okay, makes sense, makes sense, but still like it's a thing, right?
Yeah.
Do you see here, thirty-three percent of the time three bet? Oh, we face a four bet. Hmm. Let's see if it's fixing itself on the next one.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, button. Yeah? Low jack.
It's still low jack, and that should be button.
Just go next hand. Yeah, did you fold?
Yeah.
I don't know why it keeps ringing up on there again.
Yeah, strange.
Okay, give me a sec. Because I actually want to do the big blind more than anything else.
Ah, the hero, you have GTO opponents as any. GTO opponent should be big blind or button, and the other ones should also be button, big blind. That is it. Now, now it should work. Now I'm switching between but big blind and button.
That's right. You just want a shot. Okay, that's good. Okay, before you click, how do you construct your three betting range here?
Yeah, I should. At this step, that. I think from the suited the low aces as a bluff. And they're off the and the kings I don't use as a bluff many times. So I'm using the lower, the lower ace combos as a bluff, and then the stronger ones as for, for value. And I think the, the suited ones, the suited aces I used, I call with ace five, ace four.
Yeah, how often, how often do you think this hand is three betting in general?
I think thirty percent.
Yeah, that's good, that's very good. So you know that it's a big, high frequency three bet.
Yeah, I don't use it too much.
Okay, I need you to find here king five.
Mm-hmm.
And what do you do with like king nine? Awesome.
Um, I think that's more like a call.
What about king seven? Let's see.
I think king seven would be the border. So king seven, I'm gonna raise them.
Okay, I need you to find every time you see this spot from the big blind against the button, king five, king six, king seven. It's like ace king. Just look at the king and don't look at the other card.
Uh-uh.
Three bet, every time. And if you're against the cutoff, it shifts. Instead of king five, king six, king seven, it shifts from king seven, king eight, and king nine.
Ah. Okay.
Well, give this guy a three bet.
Alright.
Thirty percent, let's go.
Hmm.
Uh, what's your, okay, nap, but.
Oh, huh? Our call was better. Yeah, but it's twenty percent raise, so.
Thing is, when you three bet, you should see that, Roger.
I did, but maybe too low.
Hey, what's your plan here?
It was up, but we didn't have we didn't approve equity, so maybe a check is better, but.
Is this a good turn or a bad turn?
I think this is a bad turn, yeah.
And then you could have better queen to fold if you bet again.
That's true.
Can you bluff on spade river if you bet again?
Spade comes, I mean.
Yeah?
Yeah, we, uh, we have a spade, so I think that's good to have spades.
Maybe we could, I'm not sure, but maybe. And then can we get a king eye to fold sometimes?
Uh, yeah, maybe, that we can, can maybe, can pocket sixes.
We have worse hands in your range here that makes it here.
Yeah, uh.
I think this one is at the bottom of the range, right?
Yeah, so we need to, to bet it then, or to just check it, can give up.
So what are we targeting?
Uh, I think, um, six or four.
Yeah? Okay, so how much do we need to bet to get a, maybe a four to four?
Not that much, then we have to like the sizing you mean, or the frequency?
The sizing.
Yeah, I think if we bet like five point five.
Give it a turn.
We, uh, we can get those hands to fold.
Five percent was not, not so good. What are we supposed to do?
My easy fold.
Yeah? Let's see on the turn. Just check, or when we bet, it's eight, we just picked the wrong size. We need to size up to try to convince him. It's a good double barrel. There are just new sides. By deuce.
I'm going to fold there. It's the, the lowest, uh, by deuce on the button. Same story.
I'm trying to get the wager.
But they want to trick me, yeah.
How about seven three?
I think I like a raise here more. Can be a fold too, but it is a fold, okay. Yeah, um, I think we never win this. So.
Before you click, what kind of strategy should we have here? Like we're in position, it's a king eye board. What do you think we're doing most of the time?
King eye, I think most of the time we are betting, but, uh.
So when we, when we bet just most of the time, is it big or small?
If we bet most of the time, then we should bet small.
So give it, give two a shot, maybe?
Yeah, two is, two is fine.
We got him.
If that works.
Yeah, no, it's because it's not a race three flop, so we're no man's land, but we got him.
Okay, I like this more. Yeah, I just, yeah, I'm just giving up.
Yeah?
I think we can raise here.
It's like offsuit, eh, we're not really in there. It's a sliver, it's okay. What do you do on this block?
Uh, it's connected, so I think we have to check or bet small.
Okay, so a good trick for you, whenever it comes a pair board or a monotone board, you just range bet one big one. Simple as that.
Okay.
Just do it every time and it's gonna be fine.
Uh-uh.
That's the new masterclass from at Justin Saliba, that, uh, with Jonathan Little.
Oh, it's already on the, the.
If it's not out there, it's gonna be very soon.
Oh. In reality, I would fold here, but I think GTO wants to call.
Hmm, why would you call here?
I, I would not, I would fold, but.
I think it's a fine fold. You need a spade to dance here.
Uh.
You got us.
Uh, that's why I would fold.
Yeah, I think eleven.
Yeah. Got me again.
Yeah. I would just call here.
Yeah, it's too strong, maybe.
Oh.
It's going over bets. Alright.
You're in the box.
I think first is an overbet, uh, could fold even.
I don't think he can fold.
I think I got these also, yeah, but I won't do it.
Well, do it.
Oh, okay.
Whenever you see that five pairing, I want you to find a dump every single time.
Yeah, I do it with second pair and sometimes also with five, with third pair, but I'm not doing it all the time.
You need from the big blind to do it always with third pair.
Hmm.
So if a key card pairs, you always do that, always, every time it's a robot. People are gonna be bad at you. Like they're gonna call here with ace king.
Hmm.
Uh, how do you structure your range after the turn goes check change?
Yeah, I got, I got a marginal hand, so I think I can check call. I'm gonna bluff catch. Uh, uh, because I didn't bet the, the turn.
So start with full outs. What size do you wanna use with full outs here?
Uh, all in.
Okay, what about when you have a five? You have a ace five here, and go check, check on the turn.
I think, uh, I'm thinking also like all in or one fifty.
Okay, and then, uh, what about so when you have a very strong hand, you wanna go for all the cookies, right? What about if you have top pair, top kicker? Like ace ten.
Ace ten. Yeah, I think I would bet like, uh, eighty percent, also, also bigish.
Yeah, I think you can bet kind of big. What about a weak top pair?
Uh, ten king, ten queen, let's say ten queen.
No, ten six.
And six, I'm probably bet, betting small or check, depending on my opponent. If I think he will steal, or he will bluff, I will check and call it off. So, yeah, so small or, or check.
Okay, so I think that's right. Top pair, top kicker, we bet kind of big. Top pair, bad kicker, we bet small. What about second pair, good kicker?
Ace eight, king eight.
Yeah?
Um, I will go like, uh, for, for small value, so thirty percent, so like seven bigs.
I think that, that's gonna work here. Give it a shot.
Oh. Or here, we can go seven half.
Okay, uh, what are we supposed to do on the river? Bet two. So we have the right idea, just the wrong size.
Yeah, but it's two. Yeah, okay, but, yeah.
That is a good idea. We're bluff betting every time. We just pick.
It's hot. Yeah, it's hot, call it, maybe with ace jack, ace four, ace three, maybe, but.
Yeah?
That, that call, that's all, maybe, yeah, I don't know, seven, they don't call us there. Yeah, okay. Uh, I think it's in, this or nah, I think it's too much.
I'm not three betting enough with this combo. Fifteen percent, it's a good one. Yeah, that's a good size for this texture. Oh no. He, he wants to, you're supposed to call the flop?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay, again. Now he's, he has another hand, of course.
Yeah? You three bet that again or no? Yeah?
Yep. I was, I had to do this, so.
I would do the same thing.
Aye, 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 aye. Um, I think I have got a bad idea.
Why you wanna go all in here? Is it, is it ten ever gonna fold?
No, but a five, uh.
Did the board change enough for pocket nine to be scared now?
Uh, pocket nines is not gonna be scared, pocket tens not, so not. Any overpairs not.
So.
But hands with some equity, ace jack, ace queen, can queen, we don't want them to call, we have better, of course.
Did you pick up equity?
Uh, no, not really, because of four, uh, we need four, uh, on the flop and the flop, four after the turn, so it doesn't change anything.
And then if the flush completes on the river, is the deuce a good card to bluff?
I don't know.
I would say not really. Think you want, if the flush completes on the river, you wanna bluff with a high, high flush, like a king, a spade, a mace, a spade.
Uh.
The deuce is not, then that bluff, you need flush on his, in his range, right?
Yeah, of course, because then we can do as if we have a big flush, flush. If he has, then he cannot have, not have.
Jack, maybe, maybe the only merit I see in betting is that we get better aces to fold now, maybe. But for me, it's mostly a check because of all the other reasons.
Wow.
Yeah, it's never checking, look at this.
What, what, what did it want to do?
On the turn. All in, you were right. Oh, you're supposed to jam the turn. Look at this, change move.
Uh, 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 so it was not a bad, it was not a bad idea.
Well, it was not a bad idea. Alright.
Uh, this one.
It's the same. I just put you back on the same spot. Oh, you wanna check now? You need to go all in. All the cookies, let's go. Oh, he calls, oops.
Yeah, ten is not. Yeah, and apologies to my, to my investor.
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, whoa, whoa, wait, wait a second. Um, uh, this hand.
Before you click, tell me what's your play and why?
Uh, I want to, first I want to deny equity from as, uh, eventually flush draws. If you got like one club head, uh, I want a better check to fold. Uh, and maybe I get some bad aces to fold if I size up. Ace six, ace seven, ace eight. Um, maybe add the better, the better jacks, jack queen, check ten. Check king would have probably re-raised before, before the flop. So, yeah, that, that, that kind of thing.
Honestly, Roger, I don't like any of these reasons. This guy could just have flopped the flush. You're never getting an ace to fold. A jack, you're getting a bigger, better jack than yours, you're turning your hand into a bluff, and I don't like it.
Wow.
I think it's just a check.
Yeah.
Have a pair of jack, we can get to showdown, and maybe we can call a bet.
Yeah, the, the problem with that is, is, uh, is, uh, of course could have, have a flush, of course, but now we decide that we have bets like for seven maybe, or for four point seven. If he has the flush, he's gonna call. Uh, the river will come like, uh, uh, four of hearts, four, or, uh, the eight of hearts, seven of hearts, something like that. Uh, he's gonna check, and I'm just gonna check behind. So I lose like four point seven or seven point oh five, that's max. If I check here, I'm making myself capped. So I think he knows then for sh, almost for sure that I don't have a lot of aces in my range. And he can go like one, one, uh, one hundred fifty times spot, and I'm, I'm not able to call.
No? Why do you not have aces? You bet the flop, you have plenty of aces still?
Yeah.
When you say you not have any aces, that's not.
Not, not a mu, not much. If I, uh, if I check on the turn, I don't have much aces anymore, I think.
Ra, Roger, you got a bad pair of jacks here.
True.
Space reality. We got a bad pair of jack.
Yeah.
Guy could have an ace, he could have a better jack, he could have the flush, could have the straight, could have a set, could have two pair.
For sure.
And we're just having a bad jack here, please check.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah? And now this is what you were afraid of, right?
Uh, just not that much, so I think I can call, but I'm not happy. And he has, he probably has like a lot of ace six, ace seven, ace four, ace two, maybe.
I think the number one thing you wanna think about here, when you see this bet and this texture, is you wanna have a spade in your hand to make this call. With a spade, it just makes everything easier. Without a spade, okay, no spade. What can we defend this bit here against? With, like, we got plenty of pair of aces.
Mm-hmm.
Pair of jacks.
Yeah, the stronger ones.
Ah, I think we need to call here.
Yeah. I was, I was on the cusp of calling.
I think this call is a lot better than a jack ten here, because a jack ten is black, the ten is blocking like queen ten, king ten. Ten x type of hands, whereas this one is not blocking anything. Let's see. Yeah, I'm always calling here. And you said you had ace six, you, you, you had ace six, Roger.
Uh, exactly.
Congratulations, you read the hand well, and you played well, and then you lost. And then you knew it.
Congratulations, but you lost anyway.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It was bad. You knew what he had, you called, and then you had what you knew you had.
Yeah. Uh, this. I think we have to re-raise for value here.
There's no solution, you broke it. Pick on next hand.
Again, again.
Yeah? Seven four, oh, I'm full, yeah?
Uh, could be on the cusp, okay. Two backdoors, but we have to overfold an ace.
Yeah, got it. Seven three, no good.
Nah, probably not. Uh, this is, uh, fifteen, thirty, sixty, uh. Or I would go for eight or an all-in maybe, but we have value. Um. Yeah. Could have been lost already, oops.
Blast it, Roger. Blast it.
Oh yeah, I was doubting between those two.
Fifteen. Oh, all in. Yeah, all in is good.
Well, I want, I wanted to call all in because we, we had thirty-four left. Uh, and fifteen, but it makes sense for a river bet. We're sixty in the pot, and then we would have twenty bigs left. So we got one third of SPR. Um. No, no.
Oh, no.
Nice. Now you told me, king, king, five, yeah, that's wrong. But they're gonna see bet, uh, see bet small.
There we go. Uh oh. Now on the turn, he wanted to double barrel, I think.
Yeah. I think we have to call because it's like one tenth. But no, we don't want to call.
Snowman's land. Oh no, I don't think it's a fold.
It's uh.
So where did we go wrong? On the turn? Okay, so it's on the turn, yeah. We want a double barrel descent. Twelve big. That bottom of the range?
Oh.
So three bet pot, you have top pair, you still have the nuts.
What wrong on the?
We are supposed to check our bets small. Wants to check this turn.
On, on the turn, on the turn, okay.
Yeah, turn checks. Uh, go back to the turn. It's happy with your check. Here? Uh, on the turn, button, check. Okay, ninety-eight percent. Oh, okay, I see why. Because I think it's a good card for the button, but the flush completes, so I understand why it wants to check.
Uh.
That sounds.
And now I'm gonna check. I think he has a lot of uh, maybe queen X, maybe king with a low, with a low X. Or just a five. Uh. Yes, an easy one. Same. Oh, he's gonna raise.
I'm checking.
I like checking too, but I'm thinking if we can get value from a worse hand. Well, ace eight, maybe ace ten, no, ace ten, not spot. Yeah, this is, this is dangerous, I think. I like a bet small, but uh.
So from what I understand, okay, this is not the spot you're playing in wrong. The spot you're playing wrong is this one. Was that what I said?
Yeah, the button versus any position. Yes.
Oh, the alarm.
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh.
You gotta go?
Yeah, I have to go, because I have to.
Alright, we'll keep, we'll keep this exact spot for training for next time. If you want, we can give it a shot later.
Yeah, yeah, uh, because I don't think I, I will play today.
Me neither.